All on budget, on time?
On budget, on time. The only change order that's currently up for discussion that has significant numbers, the approximately $25,000 for updating the pump station communication system to the new facility. That wasn't included as part of it and it's not terribly workable now. And to the SCADA system that does the alarms and those kind of things is a... And so in putting the new system into the new plant, that the upgrades to the SCADA system and the pump station would make it more effective. That's the one outstanding one at this time.
Yes.
Let me get after that. Comments on the engineer? On our packet says, "Engineer reviews SCADA proposal for contractor owner advised that PLC for PS number one can be reused once PS number one is offline." So they're still circling the wagons.
There's a piece of... There is one part of a pump station that's going away that can be used in one other pump station, but there are two other ones that need upgrades.
Gotcha. Okay.
So we'll be saving that as replacement parts?
That's correct.
Great. Okay. Item B, construction meeting minutes.
Yes, and that's the minutes of the most recent construction meeting we had earlier in July.
Any questions on that? Okay, we'll go to item C, police report called to Verona Island on 7/24/2016.
Yes, that's a copy of the chief's report of that incident. We're required to provide a copy to Verona and to the elected officials of this community when this occurs.
Okay, this is just...
Yes, it was a request from the Hancock County RCC in regard to domestic...
Item D is press release?
Yes, the press release is good news. The official notification from AARP, which has also been published in the enterprise, I noticed this week, as well as it's been released to some other news media, which is that Bucksport has been granted the status of an age-friendly community by AARP. And we are... We were the 14th main community to be participating in the program and the 99th in the United States, so...
I thought that was interesting that Maine has 14% of the total participants in this. It tells you where we're at.
We are ahead of the curve.
Probably if we get those sidewalks fixed, we'll get another certificate.
Okay, we're gonna go on to item six. New ordinances to consider and introduce. Item A, proposed zoning ordinance change to section 13.15.8.7 to remove the word existing in the order to allow newly constructed buildings in the downtown district and the Shoreland Zone District, the same packing considerations as existing buildings, referral to the planning board. Susan?
In looking at a proposal from someone who's interested in purchasing a building here on Main Street that's in poor condition, they had indicated to us as part of that application that they would... It's in such poor condition that it's more cost-effective if the building comes down and new construction is placed on the site. But our zoning ordinance, and I've put a copy of the page in here, allows for existing buildings to be... To utilize public parking as parking availability in these zones. But if you take a building down, it's no longer existing and you have new construction which requires that there be sufficient onsite parking needs. And if you think about that in the downtown and the downtown Shoreland Zoning District, if any building came down, it literally couldn't go back up because it would not have sufficient space to have parking on the site itself. So my request is... This is a process. Your process requires that it go to the planning board who holds a public... If there's any change to your zoning ordinance, that it go to the planning board who holds a public hearing and then they come back with a recommendation to the council. Takes about 90 days for that to happen. And I don't want it to inhibit proposals that we have that are valid and viable for being able to move forward. So rather than put this on for a referral to ordinance, I'm asking if you would consider this evening referring this to the planning board so we can get one step ahead with the idea that... I'm hopeful that if the development that was considering locating there can get a waiver of this requirement, that at least that could move forward. But to prevent this from being a handicap to other potential business locations in these areas, I'm asking that you refer this to this.
That would affect vacant lots on the waterfront that we presently have, too, correct?
That's correct.
Even if, you know, the building that replaces a building coming down is on the exact same footprint, by the word existing, getting basically a variance on the on-site parking, any new construction, even if it's the same size, same location, everything, would have to come and provide onsite parking. And again, like Susan said, I don't think there's a building on Main Street that has sufficient area on the lot itself to provide that. So this one word is restricted.
The reason I ask that is that vacant lot down on Main Street where the old...
Webber Place.
Yeah. They can't put a... With this zoning, they can't put a... No one can put a building there without having sufficient onsite parking, which the lot isn't that big. And yeah, this word needs to come out.
And, you know, over the past 10 or 15 years, we've bought certain parcels and made public parking available, basically so this wouldn't have to necessarily be in there.
Can I make a motion to refer this to the planning board?
You sure can.
I make the motion.
Second. We have motion and second to send to the planning board, proposed zoning ordinance change to section 13.15.8.7 to remove the word existing. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Okay. Item seven, discussion items, manager's clarification or direction on council discussions or inputs on issues. First one being memorandum of understanding for field maintenance at RSU 25.
As you're aware, we've transitioned from the maintenance of fields, et cetera, from a more combined effort to RSU 25 having this responsibility. And the agreement that you see in front of you is the end result of a good deal of work and I want to credit who's done that work, which our recreation director, Tim Emery's here and he's worked very hard with the school superintendent to come up with an agreement that appropriately addresses what needs to be done and protects the interests of the town in the process. So this is on the agenda so that you can see what the outcome was of this negotiation. But this follows up on a plan that we talked about and planned on implementing when we were doing this year's budget. And specific questions regarding this, as I said, our recreation director is here, but to his credit, he spent a very large amount of time working with the superintendent to implement this.
Just so everybody understands, this is strictly on maintenance, Tim, not use, correct? Use is gonna remain the same.
So you do remain the same.
Yeah.
Nice job. Thanks.
So they're gonna mow the little league field?
See, we've always done the little league field. We mow it, but we don't market for them.
Yep.
And the reason why we've done that is because years ago, before we had the... Nancy Columbus did us a great favor when they built the head that... They gave us some money for that ball field. And for a while, we used to do everything. We'd mow it, market and everything because the girls have to use it. Reggie didn't feel, we do the same for them, but not for the boys. But what we've been doing since it's more of a private field, we'll mow it for them, but they have to take care of anything else beyond that. And they've done a wonderful job up there. You see, any buildings you see out there are done by volunteers.
Yeah.
It's just a wonderful job they've done up there. And boys, Nancy Columbus saved us a lot of time because many a time, we had the field behind the high school and that's the one place we had for the little league. And a lot of times we'd get there and all the guys in the middle teams there, they'd scare those, give up overtime and then get there and all of a sudden softball team from the high school plonked them off as they had a game. But that's where things were a little tight, a little feeling, a little tight back then. Nancy Columbus really... I can't say enough, a lot of that's one of the best things we've done in town, you know, they donated money to build that. And all the volunteers that stayed with it, you know, Peter Iacocca, Peter's son, Drew Davis, all helping out and show you where Paul and... It's just a good outfit up there. Very pleased with it.
And this goes to the whole thing of the kind of community we have. Every... Anytime somebody from out of town shows up and sees any of the facilities and the stuff that we have, they absolutely compliment us to death on how nice our stuff is. And I think it is absolutely a tribute to Tim and to his guys and all the volunteers that are out there that have...
And I know it may not quite go as big, but Jim Boothby has a background and, you know, the knowledge on this. And of the three people that work on these ball fields, two are being paid by the RSU 25 and we had one through us as Chuckie. Now Chuck will go with the RSU 25. I used to guide them on different things. Now that's gonna fall under Gary Moulton. But one thing I wish and make sure that they take a lot of pride in that because we put a lot of work into it. We've got an excellent group up there working, I can't say enough, just like we do on the waterfront with Johnny Groves. He can't, you know, he's just a wonderful worker.
I think an important part of this is that, you know, the RSU uses these fields probably 90... Better than 95% of the time and it was being maintained by the town of Bucksport while there's other communities that send students that use those facilities. And this way, being it under the RSU umbrella, that everybody is responsible for... All the communities are responsible for maintaining the fields that they all participate on.
And the town relinquished no ownership of the fields in the process? That did not happen?
Now, do we have to...
There's no action that's required. It's just this was for your information because it was the last piece of that transition responsibility.
Well, thank you, Tim. Thank you, Susan. Okay. Item B is bid results for concrete sidewalk repairs.
We had one bid for sidewalk repair that involved the replacement of 42 sidewalk concrete sections and the lifting of 252 feet, additional feet of slabs that were at various heights. And the replacement of two sets of concrete steps, one being in front of stained glass shop and one being down next to Camden National where you've got an up and a down and the one side of it is failed. And so following the sidewalk tour, which is the next item, I asked Duane to contact the bidder that we had for this and first to remove one set of steps from the process, which is the set down near Camden National, which one side is fine, is just to... We would remove the other side of the steps, fill in grass and then there would just be one that removes that. And to find out if the same price would hold if we simply replaced the 42 plus the 252 feet that were going to be lifted, that instead of lifting and that we did an entire replacement. And the answer is yes. So removing one set of steps reduces the overall bid by $11,500 and because the steps across here were $9,500, instead of the $20,000, it was totally allocated for both sets of steps. We have left in after the... We pay for the asphalt sidewalks that we've done, $15,718 in the amount that was appropriated to do sidewalks this year. If we add $36,282 to that amount, you can do all of the sidewalks that I've outlined plus that set of steps, which badly needs to happen. And as is part of the next proposal, what I would like to do is have a resolve on your next council meeting to move this forward so that we redo the sidewalks for the next year with that $36,282 coming from fund balance. I have what you also have, which is probably manager's report, your financials for year end, which you could do this and then it... That portion is done for this year. You had appropriated more this year than $40,000 than you generally ever have for... Or I won't say ever, but having some time for sidewalks because they had gotten into a state of disrepair. And as the storefronts on Main Street have filled up and we are encouraging and want people to be walking our downtown, there are a number of areas where that's pretty difficult for people who are both mobile and who are in real chairs or need assistive devices. So that is the... What we got on concrete sidewalks and what I'd like to be able to move forward with at your next meeting.
Any questions on that?
Well, I got a question. I kept reading on this and it says about the... Where it's not done, seeing people. And I know we're waiting on Fairpoint. We could be waiting for, you know, till all of us are gone.
I have... I have... I made an outreach to... A bid up the food chain at Fairpoint and got an email back today that engineering should be in touch with me about that within the next week. So I'm in hopes that we can... Because what I indicated, I took the liberty of saying, "We're doing sidewalks. I need this done." But don't tell anyone if we don't because we still need to have that done. But it's... But yes, I have... They have agreed that that needs to be because it's been a couple of years and they haven't moved that conduit.
How would that work if say we don't get the response back in a timely manner? If we put a temporary cold patch on it, would they be responsible for digging it up and repairing it properly?
They'd have to do whatever they had to do to replace ours, but I don't want them to replace it with cold patch. I want it to be a concrete, like everything there.
Okay. Okay. But they have to replace the concrete hole? Or are we responsible for that?
I'm not positive because the pole was relocated and their stuff has to go on it, whether it's CMP or it's Fairpoint or whoever that one sidewalk section is.
And they're gonna take that old pole out, right?
That's correct.
Any other questions on that? If not, we're gonna go on to item C, sidewalk tour results.
Well, that was one of the items we had at the last council meeting. Pearl Swenson from the Senior Resource Group issued an invitation to the council and anyone else who wanted to participate to do a walkabout in the downtown to assess a number of issues. One was sidewalks, which we just talked about. Another was the designation of handicapped accessible parking spaces. The third was concern over an area adjacent to Community Pharmacy where there's a railing that takes you down to a catch basin. And the fourth was the difficulty in accessing some Main Street businesses or businesses in general that had challenges because of space and no ability to install ramps or those kind of things. So the sidewalk, we've just discussed. I won't go over that again. My recommendation remains the same and I will include on next agenda unless there's an objection or resolve to move forward with sidewalk repair. The second thing is access to Main Street from the Community Pharmacy parking lot. The proposal is to extend the edge of the parking lot out to where the grass is and to install a railing that goes in a less steep incline from that location down to the sidewalk instead of to the catch basin, which is the current location of where that goes to. In order to allow people utilizing the existing handicapped space at that... In that parking lot, to actually be able to utilize it in a way that makes sense because right now it doesn't. If you exit from that, you're not going to go very far unless you inch down to the catch basin and that doesn't work well. That's the second recommendation. The third, in regard to designated handicapped parking spaces, we have... We walked and rolled and strolled and cut down Main Street and back. There is currently a handicapped accessible spot marked in front of the Nicholson Building. And there are three spaces there and interestingly enough, it's marked as the middle space, which makes it not accessible for those with impaired mobility in reality at all because if you get out, there's a curb on both sides. So the first proposal for that spot is to move it to one end or the other because on either end, there's a ramp to access to the sidewalk once you exit a vehicle. And that would be the most likely would be the space closest to this building from that because when you exit the building, you're right around and you're on the ramp sidewalk. The second recommendation is the addition of a parking space on Elm Street adjacent just up from where the stop sign is, where the sidewalk doesn't have a curb that would allow for a handicapped accessible space that would exit someone not onto a curb but onto a place where they could actually get out and down without negotiating a curb in the process. And the third space identified as a possibility is just northwest, I'm directionally challenged, going towards Bangor from Creatively, Maine, where there's one parking spot just beyond the parking lot. There's one spot there that has ramped access on either side of it and hashed lines that would be a viable... And all of these are in areas of the community that... Where there are businesses that people could readily access services from if there was parking in it available. And we're challenged by curbs and constrained by the distance from storefront to storefront. But those... The moving the one by the Nicholson Building to make it more workable and the addition of two additional spaces is a start in trying to provide better for those who have mobility challenges. And the last item is accessing businesses. And this is the most difficult because of the age and construction and even geography that we encounter in some areas. But there are small things even that can be done that assist. Bookstags has a grab bar by the door and that helps people who are going in to get safely up the step that has to be there because it's... The sidewalk is much lower than the business. So I'm proposing that you use $10,000 of your TIF monies, set up a grant program for businesses to access. And I'm not just saying Main Street, businesses to access if they want to make modifications that help access into their business in some way. And we have those who might need help with a ramp, those who might need help with just grab bars, just... The town is investing money this year in making this building more accessible with the push-button exterior. And I think that this, setting up a grant fund for this purpose would help send the message to businesses that not only are we doing it for the sake of residents and others to buildings that the town has, but we are encouraging others to do that by putting some money out there to assist with even the small things that make it easier for residents and visitors to access our businesses. And that was the result of our side... That's my interpretation of the result of our sidewalk tour and my recommendations to the council at this time to move this forward. This is not the end of this road. There's more issues and there's more things that can be done in the future, but in looking at how to address the immediate needs, these are my recommendations.
Susan, go ahead. Go ahead. The only other thing that I saw and I noticed that there was an issue where everybody was on the tour was directly across from Elm Street on the other side of the road, that handicap sign that was against the building.
Yes.
Is there any way we can pull that one closer to the road? I know that was one of the issues that they had talked about also.
Moving the sign.
Yes. Yep. The spades itself was fine. I think it was just nobody knew it was there if you couldn't see the sign. Thanks.
I think both of these are just great stats to what town government should do for their citizens. And I think it's just great that we're going to be doing this. Any other comments from the public on this?
Thank you very much. I'm gonna set a precedent here. Yeah, I want to also, as chair of Resource Committee, I want to thank all of you that went the other night, exactly all of you, plus Mr. Tom Michael. And the ones that were along with us that helped, had a lot of questions, love taking, all the good stuff. And I just want to thank them on behalf of the Resource Committee and everyone else, all seniors, everyone having mobility issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Maybe now you can help us to help ourselves.
Well, and the other thing, and that's great, and the other thing I want to do is I want to thank you because we don't see everything and it takes folks to get involved and bring these things to our attention so we can have an impact. Because if we don't know about it, it is tough to see everything that's going on out here. And it takes people to get involved. And I applaud you folks for going out there and doing that because it absolutely was an eye-opener for me in some of these cases. It doesn't affect me. You know, I don't see those things. I, you know, and it's tough. It's great for people to come forward and be able to do those things and let us know about it.
Right. And thank you so much for being willing to do it and everyone else.
That's what we get the big bucks for at P S.
Yeah. And it isn't just seniors, it's everyone of the mobility issues. And going down the road, you're all gonna be seniors. I wish I could have been the one doing wheelchair.
I wouldn't have done as well as you, trust me.
This is an investment for our seniors, but also an investment for our town.
That's right.
Because people come from all over now and are visiting Bucksport.
Yeah, you gotta make it nice though.
That's right.
You need a motion, ma'am?
No.
Do that.
I guess that the things that need a motion, that don't need a motion, it will need a vote at the next meeting, are related to the sidewalk primarily. The other things are things that we can do anyway. They're not... They don't cost money. We have staff, et cetera, that are gonna do them. But the sidewalk one and the grant program for accessibility will be two resolves that would be on your next council meeting for consideration.
Do we have to wait?
We don't have to wait. Yes.
I'm just...
I'm sorry. No, only because...
Remembering the resolves and stuff like that.
I would not be comfortable voting on that. This initially... This initially was going to go to committee, but I'm sensing the council doesn't think it needs to go to committee, that you're, because so many of you participated in the, that you can, you're comfortable with it just going from here to resolve, then I'm good with that.
I was surprised that there was so much grass, too. Is that going to be addressed? Grass where there shouldn't be grass?
We want to, you know, we want it to look good, and there's grass growing everywhere on the walkways, the roads.
Curbs.
See the curbs. I mean.
We have a high, Highway Department has a high-pressure washer that could wash that stuff right out of those.
Yeah.
I may notice of that stuff, too.
Yeah, I didn't realize it until walking it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I went on the tour, Jim Morrison, East Foxville. I went on the walking tour because my wife has issues that require that these things get taken care of. I think that it would behoove you people, if in the future you decide that you want to take another tour after some of these things are addressed, maybe rent some wheelchairs and get in those wheelchairs and try to negotiate the sidewalks as they are, and see what issues that you, you know, you can watch somebody else and say, well, you know, that is quite a problem, but if you're sitting in that wheelchair and you go down one of these ramps and it's a little more than it should be, you're going to feel like you're going on your face. And I think that that experience will give you a little more incentive to maybe get these grants taken care of and talk to these people that have the businesses and see if you can get them to open up and be willing to do something about it, you know? See for yourself what it's like to try to pass each other on the sidewalk, and then whatever things that you find you want to try to do, you know, it makes a difference.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we're going to move on to item D, mobile home foreclosure at 633 State Route 46, abatement request.
Okay, we have a, if this, this isn't, this has been around for a while. We have a mobile home located on land owned by somebody else, and the mobile home has been in foreclosure with the town for a number of years. And the mobile home is in poor condition. The mobile home has been given by the record owner to the owner of the land. The owner of the land wants to get rid of it, demolish it. It has no tongue and it has no wheels, so hauling it's not, and it's floor and it's roof are in terrible shape, and he just wants to get rid of it. It's one of the items on your foreclosure list that would be a sincere impossibility to ever collect $1,100 or whatever it is that's listed, because the taxes have continued to be assessed on the property and it's, it's better off dead, I guess is the best way I can phrase it. So Mr. Keyes has, would like, has asked that if the council would abate the taxes up to the current year, he would pay the current year's taxes, 2017, because he acquired it technically before the April 1 deadline, which would have made it in his, and which would allow him to then have it, have it off the foreclosure list and he can demolish it. And it, his saga is over. It's my understanding that this isn't the first time this has come up, but prior to this, the landowner didn't have title to the mobile home, didn't have ownership of that, so it couldn't, so it's kind of continued on as a saga, and it inflates our outstanding tax list in a way, because it's not collectible.
Yeah, we're going to take this up later on, right?
That's correct, but that's, this is the background of what this, there's a resolve at the bottom if you choose to.
Any questions on that? We'll be taking it up later. If not, we're going to move on to item E, Bucks Mills Road Guard Rail Project, request for additional funds.
The, we had budgeted this year to replace 525 feet of guard rail on Bucks Mills Road. It's the wooden wire old guard rail that's now in a state of disrepair, and it's located near the Stubbs Brook Crossing on Bucks Mills Road. And the $4,800 was in the budget to do this replacement. And the cost from C.A. Newcom, which is who you have do your guard rails when they do guard rail repair, and it's using the recycled guard rail, was $6,693.75. The request is to use the $1,893.75 from Streets and Roads Reserve to get this project done in this year, rather than put it off another year and have to re-appropriate money in order to do so. And that's, that has a resolve again at the bottom, but that's the background of the project and what it is supposed to.
And again, I think that's one of those public safety issues. I actually went by there last night, and yeah, it's scary. I mean, you could certainly, it's not doing any good by being there, so it should be replaced.
Any other comments on this? We're going to be acting on it later on. Any questions on the details? If not, we're going to go on to item F, which is update on 14 Buck Street property for sale.
Mr. Hanscom is here this evening.
I just talked to the owner of the property, Thomas Parker.
Would you mind coming up to the podium, please?
Sure. Yeah, I talked to Thomas Parker this evening, and he was supposed to come up, and I guess his health isn't going to let him come up. So here, he planned on sending me the title of the property or the deed to the property and some papers that I need to sign, and he's going to have notarized. They're supposed to be here by the middle of next week, he said. I haven't signed anything on this property yet. It's kind of, you know, it's been kind of lagging, I have, you know, there's kind of phone calls back and forth, but.
Have you fixed the entry thing that we talked about a couple of weeks ago?
The entry.
Yeah, the window that was.
The window, yeah. I went up there and my battery on my drill was dead, so no, I have not, but I, yeah, I will be fixing that very soon. I've been, yeah, I cut my fingers, so. Yeah, that's going to be done. I'm going to have somebody do that probably either tomorrow or Saturday.
Okay, that's one thing that Jeff saw.
Yeah, Jeff's called me on it, too, and, you know, and I just kind of, ah, ah, but yeah.
So the intent is for you to still purchase that property?
My intention is to purchase it, yeah. I'd like to bring it back. I kind of want to get the outside safe and look decent and kind of pick apart the inside as I go. I'm not sure how you guys feel about that, but that's my intent.
We will give you every chance possible to get it done, so.
Yeah, he, yeah, so the paper should be here at the middle of the week. And when it happens, I guess I will come back and let you guys know what's going on.
We appreciate you coming and giving us an update.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Get better. Thank you.
Okay, item G, Bucksport 225th anniversary in 2017. Susan?
Our town clerk had asked that we put this item on the agenda, and I believe she and our economic development director have some ideas about when we should start planning and whether or not it should also coincide with the.
20th.
Bucksport Bay Festival as well, but Kathy.
You got it all together. He gets the credit. We just chat.
We talked, so we started today, reached out to a couple of, some of the couple bands, big-name bands, to see what we knew about getting them in early, get a feel around them. We thought it would be better, more cost-effective, if we combined 225 and the 20th, because of the additional cost of fire and police, instead of wasting them June, July, and then August for the art festival, one big one. Try to make it more of a two-day big event, instead of stretching out over three days, maybe not make that Friday very much, or Sunday very much possible. So I worked out a schedule already. I'd like to get together with the Chamber and with the Town Com support, look at seeing what we can do for some additional monies. Typically, the Chamber gets $4,000 and they use that for fireworks. Like to make it bigger, better, with a big committee to really get us going.
So this is joining the 225th with the Bay Festivals that were tied up?
Yes, sir, because the 225th would be 27 of June, and the Bay Festival is typically 27 of July. This year it was moved up a week. Attendance was down.
Are you looking to form a committee or multiple committees to?
It would be multiple committees, sort of like the way we set up Heart and Soul. There would be one person and then many groups, maybe a parade group, an entertainment group, a volunteer group, a scheduling group, an advertising group. So that way, the weight of the world doesn't fall on one set of shoulders or two sets of shoulders. It's more of a community outreach. Public has a chance to get on these committees and help out and feel as though they're involved.
I, 225 years. We're reinventing ourselves as a community. We need to project ourselves out there as a very progressive community. We're going to celebrate our existings and our new birth, I guess. So I think it's a wonderful idea and, you know, I think it's something the council should support.
This is me, I think, I think combining it, I'm not big on that idea for the simple fact it is 225 years. A celebration like that brings people from outside the community here, in the community, and it would be two months that we have something big like that. I think it's a chance for our shop owners to get exposure and, you know, come together as a community all, you know, two different months. That's just my sense, but.
Any other comments?
I think the bottom line is that what needs to happen has been right, is it needs to start now, that if we're going to do this a year from now, or not even a year from now, that planning and organizing and et cetera, fundraising, all the things that go along with it need to be happening now if we want it to be successful and promote and present the community in a way that you want. So that's the purpose of it being here, is to just sort of take notice that this is starting, you'll be hearing more. There'll be outreach, help-help outreach type of things, so.
I think the consensus here in the council is that we think it's a wonderful idea. How we coordinate it timing-wise and stuff like that is open to discussion, I'm sure, but the fact that we need to celebrate successes and things that are going on, and again, 225 years is a big deal, so. Have I had any other comments?
Well, we had both, we had the Bay Festival this weekend, well, I was at a place that had the same thing, Lincoln, at their Lincoln Days, and it was a mob, in a great way. I mean, they utilized not only their downtown, but their lakes, their water, you know, they had a regatta. I mean, you know, we could utilize more than just the waterfront in doing it. I mean, it, the regatta, I was on the lakes, the regatta kind of made cramped our style a little bit, but it was neat. A lot of people, and we just utilized more than just the waterfront. I know that's our, you know, our mainstream, but you could utilize fields, lakes, that is where, make it big.
Any other comments?
Have a big meeting of the municipal, that everybody and everybody, hopefully council is.
I think, I think it's a good idea, just throw up ideas on the board.
That's basically what we're looking for, and start now rather than later.
Yep.
A lot of things you have to book way, way in advance to get them.
Yep. All right. Well, it's amazing, anything you put on, how much work is involved in something. And it's a great opportunity for the citizenry to get involved. It doesn't take a lot to go into the Chamber of Commerce and say, I'd like to help, or let whoever is involved with it, we could have used, there could have been a lot more volunteers, well utilized at the Bay Festival. So if you enjoyed it and want to continue to enjoy it, and I've talked to the people out there watching on TV or streaming, that we can really use in all of these things your help. I just wanted to say, and this was only one couple, but we were setting up wincies on Main at the Alamo, and this couple came by and they said, is this, is this a movie theater? They had, they had gone to, they just bought a house, they didn't buy it at Bucksport, bought it right across the bridge at Prospect. But I forget how many towns in New England they went to, and they looked, they were amazed at what was going on at Bucksport, that it had, starting with the movie theater to, I told them about the walking trails and, you know, and they're just, they're just bubbling over. They were probably in their 30s, and I've talked to other councillors who've seen others like that, and I don't know, I don't mean that there's a mass migration to Bucksport, but I'm saying that there are some people that are discovering what it's worth, and we need to do what we can to encourage those people, because they were pretty excited. They were of childbearing age, too, so that's always good. Okay, we're going to go on to item eight, the agenda items.
Go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, first one being to approve resolve R. 2017-10, to approve abatement of 2010, 2011, through 2015, 2016, real estate taxes on a foreclosed mobile home at 633 Route 46.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public, from the council?
I have one question. How much is this year's?
$79 and, but it's, it's in the name of the owner who now would have responsibility, and he agreed that that was fair.
All those in favor?
I knew you were going.
Opposed, motion passes. Item B, to approve resolve R. 2017-11, to approve the use of additional $1,893.75 for Streets and Roads Reserve, from the Streets and Roads Reserve, for the purpose of financing the project to replace 525 feet of guard rail on the Bucks Mills Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item C, to approve resolve R. 2017-12, to approve the replacement, replacement of a pole in support at McDonnell and Summer Street, work order number 601-0000-97817. How would the council like to proceed?
So moved.
This is one up by the ball field.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item D, to approve resolve R. 2017-13, to approve the sale of a portion of the public safety building lot to Derek Cole of Elm Street as recommended by the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Going on to item nine, resignations, appointments, and assignments. Do you have anything on that? Okay. Item 10, approve a quick claim deed, discharge for municipal release deed for Lynn Bowden for 1999 tax liens.
This is a lien that apparently was not released on a small parcel that's now part of a bigger parcel, and the property's in the process of being dealt with by the bank, so this releases that lien.
Motion to approve, or motion to release.
Second it. We have motion and a second to approve the quick claim deed. Anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item 11, Town Managers Report. Susan?
Hi, the report this evening. The report this evening from me, I met with the Senior Resources Committee on July 27 to discuss the walking tour we did of the downtown area and the recommendations in regard to that and other items of interest to the group. In addition to the accessibility issues, the topics of transportation and housing were raised as issues that the group is interested in discussing with the town as we move forward. So you'll be seeing those on your agendas for your existing committees. I met with Jeff Fitzgerald, the assessor, and I met with the Executive Director of the Great Pond Mountain Conservation Trust this week to discuss holdings they have in Bucksport and plans they have for those. And in addition, the trust indicated that it would be happy to work with Bucksport on any conservation or recreation project that the town identifies in the future. And that isn't simply conserving and setting aside land, it is recreational projects if the town decided to create a recreational area for some purpose, we'll say skating or whatever, that they're, they have resources that they would assist us with those type of things. And the other item is your draft financials for the year end of 2015-16, and I attached a report to that, that the town finished last year in a healthy financial situation. It was a year in which you utilized $2.1 million of your fund balance. But I'm happy to report that you returned to fund balance $784,000, and that's a combination of the overlay plus budget line items across the spectrum which were under-expended due to things like better fuel prices than were anticipated, a lighter winter than we'd had in prior year, the prior year in terms of payroll savings, benefit savings because of the arrangement that you had with me in terms of part-time as opposed to full-time, payroll savings in the public safety, police and fire aspect and call-in reserve type of things. Our workers' comp rates were lower than anticipated. Anyway, the, there was also $168,000 in education that was under-expended, but if you remember, that's what they gave us back, that we have budgeted into this existing budget. So that $784,000 that went to fund balance is not including the $168,000. We have carried that forward. So your fund balance at year, at year-end on June 30 was $6,344,723.68. Healthy, will sustain your cash flow, et cetera. And the goal was kind of to keep it close to $6 million, yet we're there. You've used $410,000 in the coming year budget, but the overlay in that budget is 312, so you should, even if every dollar of the budget was expended in the next year, you would still be at 6.2 million at year-end. Your revenue detail that's attached, there are some items that in the final will show up. One is the investment interest, which isn't in the general fund until after year-end. And the second is that in 1415, there were subsidies that should have been billed to your partner communities of Orland and Brona, et cetera, that didn't get billed, and so they got billed in 1516, so it inflated the revenue side in some ways. But at the end of the day, your estimated revenues meet in such a way that your, there's no negative impact to your fund balance. There's nothing you anticipated getting that you didn't get to such a degree that's gonna hurt that. There were a number of things that you got more of than you anticipated. The big one was excise tax, where you realized $88,000 more than you had estimated you were going to. So the bottom line is that the 1516 year ended on a positive note with 6.6% of the overall budget unexpended, which returns that money to fund balance, which allowed you to appropriate some out of it for use this year without reducing the bigger piece, or a bigger piece than was necessary. And your mill rate still came down this year by 60 cents, so. This is the draft, you'll see the final and audit after this, but this is just to let you know, sort of, people keep saying to me, "Where did we end up? Where did we end up?" And this is kind of where you ended up after 1516.
I'd like to thank you, Susan, for your attention to details, some things that were skipped over or didn't get taken care of in the previous couple of years, and still to come up with a healthy fund balance, plus the mill rate going down. I just want to thank you as Town Manager. Is there any comments at all on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Is Ames, do they pay taxes to the town now?
Yeah.
AIM, yes.
Yeah. Yes, sir, Dave.
You know, this is a town that lost 40% of its tax base, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor. And I think it speaks well certainly of the Town Managers, you mentioned, the apartment heads and the employees, and to still be able to have a tax rate that's below the state average, I think it's a remarkable start. I think we have to continue to see where we can save, where we can do what we can do to make ourselves financially healthy. But I think in a very relatively short period of time, this is a remarkable start. That's what I think.
Any other comments? If not, we're going to go on to set public hearings, hold public hearings, approval of any licenses. I don't believe we have any. Item 13, discussion items not on the agenda for the council or public. Let's start with the public. Does the public have any discussion items?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, let's speak to Mr. Key. Last meeting, you admonished me for not standing up here at this microphone, and you told me that if I wanted to come up here, I should have my facts. And I think that this is from a council member who very seldom brings facts to the table. And I feel like that maybe you probably hadn't ought to be pointing a finger at me when you yourself actually followed by that.
Always good to get things off your chest. Thank you.
Any other public discussions? Anything from the council? If not, we're gonna go on to, oh, Paul, go ahead.
Wasn't AIM supposed to be here tonight?
Jeff is not here. I did hear from him, I'm sorry. He sent an email there. They have applied for their second site location permit with DEP for the Phase Two of demolition, that small piece that's left. And he sent me an email asking, or asking me some questions related to what kind of an agenda they might put together if AIM were to ask the council for a session to talk about the development possibilities at the thing. And I haven't got, I didn't mention it because I haven't got that back yet, but I am sure by the 11th, they'll be meeting information relative to a meeting for the council and AIM to talk about the next step beyond demolition.
But everything's good, and we haven't had any complaints on the Saturday?
Somewhere.
None that have been brought to my attention.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Any other comments from the council, discussion items? If not, we're going to go on to item 14, upcoming public hearings designated topic for committee assignments and scheduling. First one being Finance Committee, a request to purchase town-owned lot on Long Pond.
I'm just, I'm looking at finance and ordinance, both. The ordinance one, does that look like it's gonna be a longer type meeting? Okay. Would an hour be enough for that one? To start, because it looks like, actually it looks like it's gonna be more than one meeting type of thing?
The ordinance is gonna be more than one meeting, but, but yeah, an hour would be a good start.
Because the finance looks like it's pretty quick. So I was thinking if we do the finance at 5:30, and then we can go right into the ordinance at 6:00.
What date do we think it'll be?
The 11th.
The 11th.
11th?
I can't, this month for me is bad.
The Long Pond one, I think we want to take care of pretty quick. You know, are you gonna be at the next council meeting?
I'm not sure. I got, my schedule for the next month is.
Who else is on the Finance Committee?
If we could, can we do it on a different day?
Yeah.
Like the 8th or 9th?
Do it on any day you want, instead of meeting.
I can't guarantee them to be here on the 11th.
No.
After the 11th.
What's the 8th, Monday?
Yeah, Monday or Tuesday.
Let's do, let's do Monday night at 5 o'clock on the 8th for Finance.
5 or 5:30?
Let's do 5.
Okay.
You wanna do both of them that night? I'm just.
Who else is, you on the ordinance with me, too, right?
I'm on ordinance and finance.
Who's the other ordinance, is that you, Paul?
Peter Stewart, Paul Goddard, and David Key.
David Key, yeah.
Are you okay with that, David? Yeah, that's fine. 8 to 5.
Let's go, let's go at 5 o'clock for Finance, then we'll just go into the, then we'll do the ordinance from, say, 5:30 to.
6:30?
Yes, I was gonna say 6:30 is enough, thank you.
Well, no, I think if we set an hour and focus the agenda on what you're going through. The ordinance committee in particular is that.
I think it's one of the things that we want to talk about and get a hand around.
Well, what is happening is there are recurring themes in some parts of our licensing and zoning ordinance that, the recurring themes are people hate the provisions and they don't really produce anything for us, other than headaches. And so if we could identify those things that are non-substantive and create just headache for business and no, nothing positive for the community, that we could move those out of our ordinance.
Absolutely.
And this proposal is to take a look at some of those items, because I've been keeping a list that.
I think there's a lot of lists of ordinances going around that I didn't.
Well, the fact of the matter is that, as I said, we have a sign that says we're business-friendly, and I certainly do not advocate for throwing the book in the river.
Right.
Because that's not gonna get you what you want either. But if there are things that virtually everybody that has to do them is put out by because they're a duplication of some other thing, we need not to, we need to think about not doing those things. So that's what the big, this is a beginning.
Yep, absolutely.
This is a process of trying to.
Relive him.
Well, mean more than a sign, okay.
Right.
We truly do want to be business-friendly.
Well, we want to be friendly to everybody, but, and there are more ordinances than just business ones that aren't. So we, we've got a list, so we can start.
Okay. Item C is Streets and Roads, continued discussions on accessibility concerns in downtown. Who's on, who's the chairman of Streets and Roads?
Was that, was that in there as a placeholder to?
That was a placeholder for the initial.
That's what I thought. I don't think we really need to have that one since we've.
That one, the transportation issues related to bus and whether or not, what that may look like, that, we could start that kind of a discussion in September. You know, what I'd like to do is before our next budget comes along, have, have us look at the transportation side of things. So if we started that in September, we'd have plenty of time to do that, because there, there's another one that I need to schedule that's not on this list, that's a meeting of the Waterfront Committee. And I, who's?
Who's on that one?
Waterfront is.
Paul, Peter, and Paul.
So us three.
Well, that one would like to have before the next council meeting.
How long are you looking at that one? I mean, Monday night, is it, I mean, are we talking a half an hour? Because if we're gonna be here at 5, do we want to just go through the Saturday?
No, that one's gonna, we've advertised for Marina.
So.
Bring a sleeping bag.
One meeting a month.
We've advertised for Marina manager, and in talking to Kennedy, that our current, our current arrangement, where we've got a bunch of different people all with a finger in the waterfront in some different aspect, I would just like to have a waterfront committee meeting where the council talks about whether that's the best arrangement, or if there's some other arrangement. And I would like to have the council, the Marina manager, a recreation director, and our harbor master present, so that we can talk about how we do this in a way that is productive, so that, so that for next, I mean, our recreation director is talking about being done at the end of this year. Our public works director is done as of the end of August. Our Marina manager wishes to be done. We're in a transition period here where it's a good, it's a perfect opportunity to look at how we're doing all this and see if there's a model that works better. And so that's the, that would probably be an hour, and the, you know, if we did it on the 11th, we'd lose Paul, but are there, I would encourage all, as many councillors who can do that.
Could be something next week.
Well, I was gonna say, what's next Thursday look like?
I don't know what's next.
What's your schedule? Next Wednesday or Thursday?
Tomorrow. Schedule comes out tomorrow. Yeah, next Thursday, look.
If we do again at 5 o'clock or something like that.
We do a 5 o'clock next Thursday. Yep.
What is that date?
It's August 4th. August 4th.
Okay.
Okay. Perfect.
But does that, does that make sense, given all of the?
Are you gonna be able to get a harbor master up?
I'm gonna certainly try.
5 o'clock, you say, sir?
I think that's an excellent idea, because I know it's the same situation you're talking about. It'd be nice to get everybody together. Even we have Ronnie Grosser does an excellent job on the waterfront. I don't know how much longer he'll be able to do it. He's just an excellent person, but he's had to be placed. And then you see Luke here, and then I think it's an excellent idea that.
Well, we solved that, you're staying.
Yep. All right, we're gonna go to, on to item 15, which is adjournment. Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, can we back up, or is it this Long Pond thing, is that gonna be great, committee? You want to fast through that? I like to set something.
Or, Ordnance Committee meeting, next, on the, on the 8th.
But that law on Long, I'll get up here, so you can hear it. That law on Long Pond, my name's Frank Dunbar. I remember being on the committee years ago on that, and it was, started out with Skip Willins, piece of property he had there, because we took that for taxes. And there was a, we even approached that housing development across Long Pond. We put that road in if we could, they allow a landing there. Because what we're trying to do, we were trying to get a landing, a public landing on Long Pond. Now, is this gonna be any part of it? Is that gonna, is that still in the works for a public landing? Okay, now, now, let me back up some more. Now, where Skip's place was, Mr. Downs' house camp was right there, and Skip's is over here, and there was a runway down, sort of a cement, no, no, it's a tar, right down to the shore. Well, you couldn't put a launch there because you could walk out probably 50 yards and you wouldn't go up to your house. It was soft. Then they're gonna take the road, cross the road, and make a parking lot out there so you could have a carry-on. There was a time when we were trying to get a landing on Long Pond, and they even considered the outflow. There was one big rock there that we couldn't move. If we could have moved that, we could have had a public landing in there. As a result, it was sort of an offshoot from the Silver Lake boat landing. We wanted to get, get another land on Long Pond. If we can get, if we get landings on these ponds, it would, I think it would help a lot. But anyway, does this mean we're gonna lose that public lot?
That's what it's going to committee for, Frank.
Okay, I'm just hoping that.
First I'd heard about it, so that's.
Okay, but I thought you could give a little background, but I hope they keep that.
Well, come to the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll have my say, but anyway, thank you.
Yep.
It's on there because of a request by, for someone to do that, but it's not, it's not on there because we're doing it. It's on because someone requested the opportunity to be heard on the subject. So committee will talk about just exactly what you've just raised. So committee will talk about just exactly what you've just raised.
He owns 19, he wants 20. Yeah, that's what it's, yeah. I just didn't know who owns this road, if that's private or whatever. Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Those motion passes.